I call this meeting to order right now, six o'clock. And we have old business that we'll conduct here in a second. And we also have three on the new business. I want to first start with, did everybody review the notes from last meeting? Any questions, edits, concerns, or comments? I'll take a motion.
I move to adopt the minutes from last month.
Thank you.
Second?
Second. All in favor of approving the minutes?
Aye.
Aye.
None opposed? Alright.
Isn't that right, Chairman?
Alright. Approval minutes done. Alright. New business, we have three items as I just mentioned. The first item is going to be 2023-09, special use permit. And that's at the 728 Potawatomi. Staff, you care to cover? Thanks.
Sure. The applicant, DePaul USA, is requesting a special use permit to allow a two-family dwelling in the R16 zoning district located at 728 Potawatomi. Two-family dwellings are allowed in R16 zoning district with the approval of a special use permit. The property previously had a fourplex apartment building but was demolished in January of 2017, so on the map you see the addresses. It is currently a vacant lot. The applicant is proposing construction of a two-family residential property on the property. The commission may recommend issuance of a special use permit whenever it finds that, one, a proposed special use complies with all applicable provisions of this ordinance. Staff believes that this application complies with all provisions of the City of Leavenworth Development Regulations. Two, that the proposed special use at the specified location will contribute to and promote economic development, welfare, or convenience of the public. Currently, the property is a vacant lot. If approved, the property will fill a need in the community by providing a two-family housing option. Constructing a residential property on a vacant lot will continue to fill that need. Three, the special use will not cause substantial injury to the value of other property in the neighborhood in which it is located. Staff does not feel that the proposed use will cause any substantial injury to the value of other property in the neighborhood. And the location and size of the special use, the nature and intensity of the operation involved in or conducted in connection with it, and the location of the site with respect to streets giving access to it are such that the special use will not dominate the immediate neighborhood so as to prevent development and use of neighboring property in accordance with the applicable zoning district regulations. A new construction of residential duplex is proposed as part of this special use permit. The property will be returned to residential use as it had been previously. And I believe the owner is here, or representative.
Before we bring him up, any questions about what she's just provided us? Okay.
I have a question, but it might be for the owner.
Okay, that's fine. Yeah, we'll wait on him. So, no questions for staff, alright? Would the owner step up and you'll give us your name, your address, and then share with us what you'd like us to know?
My name is Sister Vicki Perkins, and my office is at 311 Kiwis. I'm representing Leavenworth Attainable Housing, subsidiary of DePaul USA. We work to get people who are either homeless or on the verge of being homeless into a property that they can manage. Both affordable in that they can pay the rent because it's set depending on their income, attainable in that we do not charge deposits, or we pay the utilities so they don't have to do the utility setup fees, and then sustainable in that we provide wraparound services to them so they're able to manage what they do. Our housing support specialist meets with them once a week to make sure things are going well. We have nine houses that we're working with now, but they're all families, which is a huge need. But we have a number of individual people in Leavenworth who need some homes that they can afford to be in. And so that's what we would hope to do with the duplexes we would do here. They'd be one-bedroom duplexes that we would provide for people. I don't know if there's other things you... Did you say you have a question?
I do. The rendering that's in the packet, it looks like a single-family dwelling, so I couldn't figure out how this is a duplex.
I don't have that. It's a... We're not positive whether it's going to be facing sideways or facing the street, but it is two small one-bedroom duplexes.
Is it front-back?
Is there what?
Is it a front and back?
No.
One unit?
Side to side.
Okay.
Okay.
I've seen them, and it's the same drawings that we have down, that DePaul has down in Little Rock, and I've seen those duplexes. They're very, very nice, very well done.
This is what we have. You can see how it looks like a single family.
Yeah, it does.
This is just the rendering for comparison, correct?
Yeah.
So, they are side to side.
Okay. Two of these, or they're both in that one dwelling?
They're both in that one.
Okay.
Just one duplex is all we put up there. We're looking for another lot that we can do a second one on, but right now we're doing that.
Thank you.
Did you see that the property value, this is equal to, close to the property in that area already? It wouldn't change the...
No, it'd be, I would think it would be about the same. If anything, it might be slightly better looking than some of them there.
Not the appearance of it, but the value of it, what I was getting at, is it going to decrease the value of the houses in that area?
I don't think so at all.
That's something you have access to, to know?
Property values?
Yeah.
That would be county assessor's office.
You made the comment, though, that you didn't think it was going to decrease the property value.
Right. Basically, yeah. Based on historical, happening same size, same locations, they don't anticipate it would decrease any value. So that's kind of a staff assumption, more than a fact, based on data they have.
Because it did have the fourplex on it previously, before it was a vacant lot.
Right, but I would imagine a fourplex is much bigger than a duplex, which would increase the value of that property. I'm surprised you made that without knowing what the value of it is.
Yeah.
Yeah, the fourplexes that were there actually demolished.
Right. I know things about that. Okay. Yeah, it's hard. Yeah, I get your question, I do. It's just hard to anticipate what the true value would be, but based on historical data, this will not affect negatively that area's value. And based on what was there and what's been demolished, I can tell you, it'll improve the community's value. Okay. Alright. Go ahead.
Were there community comments?
Hang on, hang on, I'll get to that. This is just for us to hear your story and let us know anything that we need to know. And then when you are done, we'll open this for a public hearing. Alright, go ahead.
What are the sizes? What's the size of the unit? I couldn't quite read my small fingers here. I got like...
I don't have that with me, I'm sorry. I don't know. I know they're one-bedroom, but I don't know the actual...
One-bedroom, one-floor, right?
Looks like just under 1,000 square feet, is that?
Pardon?
I can't quite read it, but it looks like it's just under 1,000 square feet.
So that's really small, because that's for two of them.
No.
That's the total size.
Yeah. So that's 500 square feet aside?
That would be probably close to that, close to correct. Five to 600.
About six, you said about 600 for each side?
Each side, I think.
Okay, larger than a hotel room per side? Okay. Does that answer your questions with her?
I have a few more.
For her, or?
Yes.
Okay, go ahead.
What are the, for the organization, DePaul, what are the criteria for people to enter that housing and enter that, enter into an agreement with you?
We have four pillars that they have to agree that they would be part of. The first pillar is they would agree to work with a financial advisor because they've got to get where income and expenses match, and so they meet with a financial advisor. We have a number of bankers who have helped us with that tremendously, and that's gone very well with the people we have so far.
Okay.
The second pillar is we have to be sure that they have ability to go to health care. If they don't have insurance, we'll get them up with St. Vincent's. We also, they agree that if needed, and sometimes it is, that they will work with the guidance center if that's necessary. Third pillar is community, because we bring all of our residents together once a month to build a community so that they have some support for each other, because many of these people have not had that in the past. And so that also has proved very valuable to them. And then the fourth pillar is the house, and our housing support specialist will be in the house once a week, so we're sure that things are kept up. Like, right now, we are rehabbing a house that somebody had lived in for five years with four pit bulls, and you can't believe the damage that's been done. That won't happen with these, because we'll be in it once a week to make sure. And if they're not keeping it clean, we'll help them to learn how to do that. So it will not become trashy, because we'll be there all the time to make sure that that doesn't happen.
And so this other property that you were talking about, what's different between that property and what happened there with the management of the property?
We weren't in, we were just, we just took over the property.
Got it. How many houses do you have here?
We have nine right now.
Nine? How many families, is it nine families, or are they all single?
Mostly families. We have one, two one-person units, but mostly it's families right now, because they're bigger and wouldn't want to waste the space.
Yes. Is there a time limit?
No. It's permanent housing.
It's permanent housing.
Although, one of our people who has not been in there very long is already talking about wanting to own her own home, and that would be our hope, you know, that we get them strong enough that then they do come out and want, and if they're ready to do something better, great, go for it. And we'll still support them in that process. But if they want to stay there, it is permanent housing.
Sure. And I see on the website that there is an emergency housing mission of DePaul. Will these, when these are constructed, will these be a part of that mission of emergency housing, or will they be permanent housing?
All of our housing here in Leavenworth, and each DePaul house, each DePaul city has a different kind of structure.
Sure.
Ours is all permanent housing.
Okay.
So we don't, we don't do the, because Community of Hope really takes care of that.
Yes. And the nine houses that you have here, do they remain full, or is there high turnover? Do you have any of that, like, data or information?
No, we've had one person that moved.
Okay.
Does this, that fourth pillar, that you talk about going inside and be sure it's clean, how about the exterior maintenance and the yard area? How is that handled?
Well, in five of them, we have somebody who does the yard. In one, the person there does it himself, and in the others are the two that we're getting ready to put people in. We're just rehabbing and getting ready to put them in, and so we'll have to decide. But we'll make sure that the outside also, like, one of the things we're going to say is you can't put a bunch of stuff on the front porch, because when you drive by, we want to look good, you know, so...
Yeah, and our code enforcement officers would pick up on any violations to the code.
Well, I don't know. I went around, drove around that area today, and I wouldn't say there was a lot of code enforcement officers in the rest of the area. That's my opinion. That's why I asked.
Part of what we are really trying to do is to improve the neighborhood, you know, not just, mainly we want to give housing to people who need it, but also as the time we do that, we want to make the neighborhood better.
Good.
Because we think that's part of our job in this, is to show what can be done in a neighborhood.
I appreciate it, Sister, thank you.
I have one last question. Can anybody apply, or are there any exclusions to who can apply?
No, anybody could apply. We don't take everybody that applies. They've got to be willing to deal with all four pillars. Just wanting a house is not enough.
Right. But there's no upfront exclusion criteria?
We'll deal with, talk to anybody.
Got it. Thank you. I appreciate your work.
Sister, thank you. You're so well-informed. You know exactly what you're talking about. One of the better equipped people to come up here and speak in that mic about what you're trying to do. Thank you, and it is a need, so thank you.
It is a need, that's for sure.
Very much.
And we have a lot of support here, people who believe in it.
Alright. Thank you, and you can be dismissed. And when you are, then we will open this for public hearing. So you may have a seat, ma'am. And if you have anything to add or say that maybe hasn't been already said, this is your moment to bring that to us. If you do have something more to add, we'd ask you to step to the mic, give us your name and your address, and we'll listen. I like, I think they really liked what you had to say.
She covered it well.
Alright. Then that closes the public hearing. Chair, we have a decision to make, as most of our options are. If you have any last second questions for staff, but...
No, I was just going to make a motion.
No, okay, so yeah, our options are, motion to recommend, approval to the city commission, motion to recommend denial to the city commission, or table the issue for additional information. I'll take a motion.
I move that we recommend approval, the findings as stated and the conditions as presented to the city commission.
I second that motion.
We have a second. All in favor of recommending approval to the city commission with included conditions? Say aye.
Aye.
Aye. It's unanimous.
Thank you, thank you.
Thank you. She came with a ton of support. She came with a ton of support.
I know. I was intimidated.
They don't need much.
And maybe single people, not families.
Yeah, and it's unfortunate we can't do anything with that with artists, whether we recommend them.
Yeah.
Where the special use, the property value will come along someday, but...
That's about the same size as some of these little retirement communities are in Baser.
I'll take one of those, so I don't have to clean.
Is there a minimum size that a dwelling unit has to, I mean, there's, you know, size requirements for the actual structure, but for the living portion of a unit, is there a minimum size?
That would be a building inspection.
And there is. Yeah, I recall several months ago, we had covered something like that. There is a minimum size, and they're well above the minimum size for us.
We did the tiny homes.
Oh, yeah, we did the tiny homes.
Yes, I think it was four, yeah, 250 was the...
Yeah, okay.
They're a little bit bigger than tiny homes.
Good. Alright, we'll move forward to the second topic. And this is a request for special use permit to allow two-family dwelling in the R16 zoning district. Staff?
The applicant, T W Tree Hold LLC, is requesting a special use permit to allow a two-family dwelling in the R16 zoning district located at 1906 Fifth Avenue. The property is currently in existing legal non-conforming use as a two-family dwelling. Any lawfully existing non-conforming use of part or all of a structure, or any lawfully existing non-conforming use of land not involving a structure, or only involving a structure which is accessory to such use or land, may be continued so long, so long as otherwise lawful. So the applicant seeking the special use permit to make the use conforming specifically because without a special use permit as a loss of 50% or greater must be rebuilt as a single-family home due to the zoning. So the commission may recommend issuance of a special use permit whenever it finds that, one, a proposed special use complies with all applicable provisions of this ordinance. Staff believes that this application complies with all provisions of City of Leavenworth Development Regulations. Two, the proposed special use at the specified location will contribute to and promote the economic development, welfare, or convenience of the public. Currently, the property is functioning as legal non-conforming two-family dwelling. If approved, the property will fill a need in the community by continuing to provide a two-family housing option. Continuing the use as a two-family dwelling will fill that need. The special use will not cause substantial injury to the value of other property in the neighborhood in which it is located. Staff does not feel that the proposed use will cause any substantial injury to the value of other property in the neighborhood. And four, that the location and size of the special use, the nature and intensity of the operation involved in or conducted in connection with it, and the location of the site with respect to streets giving access to it are such that the special use will not dominate the immediate neighborhood so as to prevent development and use of neighboring property in accordance with applicable zoning district regulations. No new structures or building modifications are proposed as part of the special use permit, the property will continue to function as it is currently. Since the time of mailing the 200-foot radius, we have not received any comments or inquiries.
Thank you, Bethany. Commissioners, questions of staff?
So, I have a question. So, we're going to give a special use permit, so this will no longer be a non-conforming?
Correct.
Okay, that's the proposal, okay.
No more questions for staff? Is there anyone here to represent?
I got one other. I'm sorry, I got one other question. If 50% of this building is lost with a special use permit, does it have to be then rebuilt as a single-family and be rebuilt as a duplex?
Correct. That's the purpose.
Thank you. I thought that's what you said, but I listened a little slow.
No, great questions. Great questions. Great questions. Thanks for the feedback, staff. Is anybody here to represent? Alright, come over, come to the mic. You'll give us your name and your address, and share with us what you would like.
Okay, so my name is Jenna Chow, and my address is 2373 West Elizabeth Tree in Olathe, Kansas. I'm actually the Realtor for the owner, the TFP, when they purchased the property, and then, but they locate in California, so they are not here. Local in Kansas, that's why they couldn't be here tonight. And so they sent me this, you know, basically have me represent them, and then what they wanted to do is to obtain the permit, so it will be, it will not be non-conforming, be conforming. Everything stays the same. They actually, they, I believe they purchased the property last year in May, and then after they purchased it, they actually made quite a bit of update to it. They actually, because the previous owner really laid like a rundown pretty bad, so they repaired like everything inside and a lot of stuff outside, and then right now, both sides are rented out confirmed today, both sides have tenants in there, and both sides are three-chip, so three bedroom, two bath. And then when they purchased in the city, I mean, sorry, in the county, they actually, they were identified as a multifamily. There was no information regarding it was in a home zone or anything, so that's, that's also a thing for you guys to consider.
Okay. Thank you, Jenna. Commissioners, questions of Jenna?
I have a question. So basically, they want to get this zone for duplex. One reason, because if something happens to it, they can rebuild it as a duplex. Plus, now they want to have it conforming so, as showed in the notes, so they can refinance the property and recoup some of their money that they put into it, which is, which is a natural thing to do, so that's...
Yeah, because right now, they could not refinance, they purchased it with cash, and right now they couldn't refinance it because the bank saying is...
Non-conforming.
It's almost a single, so non-conforming, so they cannot, you know, basically do the mortgage for them, yeah.
Yeah, okay.
Smart reasons.
And I'll just say, for the record, you know, I compare the, what you see on Google Street View to what the property looks like now, and that was a, that was a year ago. And I do see some improvements from there, so...
I drive by it every day.
I would say the inside is a lot more improvement than outside. Like, the prior, when they took over, there were several broken windows even up front, and now that's all repaired, and the inside's completely redone.
So when they purchased it, did they purchase it as a duplex, or did they purchase it?
Yeah, because that's what the listings show us.
Okay.
Yeah, there was, there was no way, like, we would have known, it wasn't, it was only as a single.
Sure, okay. I don't have any other questions.
Okay. Anyone else?
Do they own any adjacent properties in that area?
Not in the area, but they do have a couple properties down in KCK.
Okay.
Yeah, they like to invest in the not-so-great neighborhood and bring up the neighborhood value and things like that.
I know that. Duplex next door to it, or the next door to it, or to the south, just getting a new roof, that's why I was asking if they purchased any of us.
Thank you for your time. You can have a seat. This will now open this for public hearing, if there are any. Go ahead. And just like before, come on up here, state your name and your address, and share your business with us.
My name is Charles Darden, and my address is 701 Cogwood Drive in Lansing, Kansas. I am the owner of the property right across the street from the duplex, 1903 Fifth Avenue. And I'm here just for clarification. I think I got the answer I was looking for, but when I received this notice, I was under the impression that they were trying to create another unit within the two units. That's what it read to me, that's the way I understood it. But now that I understand, you're not doing that, so it's basically going to stay as a duplex. Because currently, as it stands right now, it's a lot of traffic on Fifth Avenue, and the more people you have in these duplexes, the more limited parking you have. I mean, I have, like I say, own the property right across the street, and a lot of times people are parking right there on the side of the street, and it's crowded. Basically, on Fifth Avenue, sometimes you can just only have one lane going out through there, so it can be quite busy on Fifth Avenue. Also, it gets to be a little noisy there as well. Of course, you got the little street there right behind 1903 Fifth Avenue, a little dirt road where people hang out in the back, back there, and then, of course, you know, it gets to be a little noisy right there, that duplex too, sometimes. So, again, I'm here just to make sure that it's not going to be another unit within a unit, so I think that's clarified. But thank you.
Thank you. Thank you for being interested and invested in your community. Appreciate that. Alright.
Is there something in the letter that would give a tweak so that there's no confusion in the future?
Well, when you said commonly referred to as 1906 Fifth Avenue, that's what threw me off, because I thought you were talking about that one unit. But if you had said 1906-1908, that would have clarified it.
Okay.
Good point. Because it's one of the...
Yeah, that's, well, well said.
And I know you guys used it in this duplexes by the first unit, but it would be nice if it was by both units.
But then I would have got to meet you.
Send letters out to the neighborhood, right?
Say again?
Especially when we send letters out to the neighborhood. Okay, good deal.
Like I said, I would have got to meet you.
Good to meet you guys, too.
Yes, of course.
You, you know, here for years, you retired together, and also I know you from church.
Yes.
Very good. Alright, then that closes our public hearing. Commissioners? We know the...
Make a motion that we approve to the non-conforming duplex use, so they can refinance or whatever they need to do, and that they're upgrading, et cetera.
So you recommend then to approve to the city commission, which included conditions, correct?
Right.
Okay. Take a second?
I'll second.
Well, there's not really any conditions, though. We're not adding conditions.
No. Just reading it, reading it verbatim. Keep us, keep us in the clean here. Alright, yeah, I don't want to talk about refinancing and things like that. It's not our place.
I'll second.
Alright, we have a second. All in favor of recommending approval to the commission?
Aye.
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 It's unanimous? None opposed?
The reason I said that is because it's tempting to re...
Thank you, everyone.
Thank you. Thank you.
Now we can go home.
Thanks for your travel coming up here and representing them from California.
Thank you, Charles, good to see you.
Thanks, Charles.
We didn't... No, well, that's glad you got to experience.
We'll get to agenda item number three in a second, lots of reading.
Yeah.
Just a few little changes.
Yeah, I, I read over it.
Are you talking about the alleyway behind the yard?
Yes, I mean, I think that would go all the way with the neighbors around, um, those duplexes.
Yeah, I'll let them know, and yeah, yeah, because like, they, they never seen the property in person, because they purchased it.
Right, they're in California.
Yeah, but when they purchased it, they only saw videos and pictures, and then, you know, I took it in the house, and the house, I don't know.
Yeah, I just...
But yeah, that's a good thing, I, I will...
If you'll pass that, it's not a requirement, that's just me, that's my...
Yeah, and then I think, I think that's a good, because not everyone have this kind of insight.
Thank you, ma'am. All right, Commissioners, item number three, text amendments to Article Nine, Historic Preservation to the Development Regulations. Staff?
Um, the City Commission adopted the Development Regulations, as you see today, in June 2016, after a year-long comprehensive update process. The Historic Preservation Section, Article Nine, has not had a comprehensive update since that time. This update will ensure it remains up-to-date and comprehensive. The proposed amendments update the code to reflect current practice and laws, add clarification to current practices and policies, and reorganize the existing article for better flow. I'm just going to highlight some of the changes, and then, if you have questions, you can follow up with that. So we make a change to the size of the board from seven to five, and clarify the suggested background of the commissions, to make it as suggested and not required due to the size of Leavenworth, sometimes it's hard to find board members with backgrounds that reflect what was in the development regs before. It removes references to the Environs portion of the Kansas State Preservation Law, which has been removed from the law. It removes inconsistent language and corrects language throughout to match current practices. It adds clarification in language to differentiate between review processes, and combines the section regarding alteration, expansion, or demolition major with Section 9.16, Procedure for Demolition, Alteration, or Expansion. Any questions for staff?
So, none from that, my question is, did you all have the time to review all these and look at the red highlights that they're making, recommending changes for?
Yep.
Okay, I did as well.
And this is going to be going to the Preservation Commission Wednesday, before it goes to City Commission later this month.
Okay.
I had a, I guess I had a question, so, I got my papers all messed up, because somebody figured out what to do.
Yeah, no, take your time, hey, there's, we've had to sit through hours of reading all this before, for words, so, we're going to try to avoid that.
The question I had was, the people that were to be appointed...
Yeah, that's right, right here.
9.04.
Yeah, thank you. I don't see anybody, it's all architecture professionals in the field, I don't see anything about real estate values, historical, and I kept looking farther down, that one real estate professional, one planning commissioner, and/or one historian beside, as members at large. Is that, so we have all those up above, plus...
Plus all those.
At, at least those other three, or whatever you got down below, I, I got a little confused in reading all that.
Yeah, so did I, it's like you're asking for these people, plus all those people originally there too, it's like...
You got all those architectures, architecture history, architecture, this, architecture, archaeology, and then you got one real estate professional, one planning commissioner, one, and/or one historian, amateur professional, as well as members at large. So how many members do we have on this?
So there's seven right now, we're proposing it to be five, we can reword that and make it simpler.
So right now, with...
Or, 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 or.
Yeah, you got a minimum of three board members to have those credentials, and then you've got one real estate professional, one planning commissioner, and/or one historian as well, so you'll have three, but you still have four more.
Mm-hmm.
Because you have the four down below, plus the three up above, that's seven, which ones you've taken out?
Yeah, yeah, so because you've got too many requirements there for five.
Yeah, you have six, if you go 1-1-1, you got six with the three.
Um, we want to try and keep all of those as options, so I'll make that, I just added this, and...
Okay, all right, so you could read that as an or for those final three positions, because it looked like you're pretty heavily wanting, three of the board members must be, professional fields include history, all that, and so then, with any combination of the final two, all right.
And it doesn't flow in terms of the English right there either.
Yeah, and I just found some typos, too.
I'm not the only one who was confused?
No, not at all, not at all.
I was counting six, and I was starting to go to seven, but...
You read through it so many times.
The last and or would have committed seven.
All right, so just take that, yeah, take that note.
Yep.
And maybe it's a little easier to actually make a list there?
Is it, they're currently seven on the board right now?
Yes.
And of that seven, are many of them already architectural people?
Yeah.
So, but we added that as a requirement.
It's in there, but we're trying to make it so that...
More streamlined.
Should those be ors? Ors also, as opposed to and or?
Ors, yeah.
There are ors.
I thought they were. A minimum of three of those. I wish I'd be, impossible, a minimum of three of the board members.
So I have one other question before we're done with that one.
Good.
I'll make sure.
Excuse you, you're telling me that, that three, three have to be, what you've underlined here, minimum of three board members must be professional fields, including history, architecture, architecture history, historical architecture, archaeology, or landscape, three of them have got to be within that. Are any of the current seven board members, or, is three of the current seven board members fall under that? Do these people exist? Are we creating, creating something that we can't fulfill?
Well, it says shall to every extent, yeah.
Okay.
We could add that to every extent possible.
Yeah, well, and it's there already.
I think it's in there.
Oh, okay.
Okay.
It says shall that can throw you off.
Yes.
Yeah.
So, yeah, in short, the red has been added, nothing else has been deleted from what they previously had in text, so...
Maybe it would be better to say the membership, to every extent possible, should include, and take the shall out?
Right.
Or will include.
Not will, it could be will.
Man, it should.
Because shall does imply that it must be.
Yeah, I wasn't an English man.
All right, so go back to work on that, just keep on flipping and going forward, folks.
My other question is, is there any significance in some of it being blue and some of it being red?
The blue is moving it, so I tried to combine all the, the, the blue at the end, or, I moved the, so that all of the review processes were under the one.
So those are from other sections that you, the wording already exists, and they're just...
It just got moved.
Okay, gotcha, all right. I was a little confused by that, but I understand. I didn't have a problem with the rest of it, though.
I had a question on 9.16, but that's way in advance.
No, you're actually, it's...
9.16, you said?
Yeah, the demolition, alteration, and expansion, just under a, where it says, it's talking about the preparing a certificate for appropriateness or conduct a state law review. What?
So that's part of the clarification, is, a certificate of appropriateness would only be issued if we were, if the commission were doing a review of a locally listed landmark. Most of the reviews, majority of the reviews they do are state law, and so, we're making it more comprehensive, and what the actual review is, that's taking place.
Do we, do we, as a city, have any responsibility in that state law review?
Yes.
Okay. Is that outlined somewhere else, like what's involved, and I, I don't know what's involved in that state law review?
It's the state preservation law, and I think it talks about it earlier in the, or is that in our CLG agreement?
What is CLG?
But the process is the same kind of review, it's just when they're approving, they delineate if it's a certificate of appropriateness they're approving, or a state law review. And that's why that language was added throughout.
And before, there wasn't a state law review?
I mean, they were doing state laws, but it wasn't in the regulations, and it should have been.
Okay.
Because we've been a CLG, a certified local government since 2006, that's when we had our agreement with the State Historic Preservation Office to do the state law reviews at the local level.
Does, does this help for people who are restoring historical buildings to get bond issues and funds for those?
No, not through, not through the city.
Okay, I just wondered if, if the regulations help them in financing their restoration?
Mm-hmm.
Okay.
Just a question.
Yep.
And, and then, so B, after that, this is all added information that, that came from where, did this come from legislation, or?
So, we just updated our state law agreement with the State Historic Preservation Office in the fall, I believe, and as part of that, we have to have a list of minor administrative reviews that we can do, and so we added that, just to keep it clarified and consistent.
Okay, but before, there were, there still was...
There was some.
There were some, there were some very minor miners, this, not many. Okay, but they weren't listed out anywhere, this is just listing specifically what is minor and what is major?
Correct.
All right.
It was just, it was listed on the application, but not in the development regulations.
Okay, thank you, that, that's helpful.
Okay, keep moving. Number four, 910, anything on 910? They're on the bottom of the paper.
Yeah, I know, I said I got them all.
I do that every week, shuffle my papers and walls.
Yeah, I'm back, I'm back.
911, I'm still, still there on 911, I have nothing on 911.
Okay.
912?
I, uh, so the, the removal of that, the sign stipulations, they're in, in H?
That's part of the Environs, which was removed from the statue, I believe in 2017.
Okay, so now, just if they have any signs, it's just going to be taken on a case-by-case basis?
This was referring to properties within 300 feet of the historic district, not, anything within the district is still being reviewed. That line was covering outside of the district.
And, and that's no longer...
And they no longer are reviewed.
Got it, okay.
Thanks, Brian. Number nine thirteen? And nine fourteen has nothing, and then final page, nine fifteen?
Which is all marked out.
Yeah, yeah, are we...
Were there any changes?
Are nine fifteen going away?
It got moved to...
Nine twenty-three got moved to...
Earlier.
Okay.
To the major section.
Alteration, demolition, okay, got it, got it, all right.
Is there anything, and forgive me if I just read over it, so if a property is, is placed on the list, the historic preservation list, and then they, they don't want to be on the list anymore, so that they can make changes however they want, and not come back to the historic committee, preservation committee, is there a process for that?
Well, if it's on a local list, I don't know if there's an appeal process laid out in here.
I saw an appeal process, but I don't know what it was for.
It goes to the City Commission. If it's on the national or state register, that's done at the state and national level, and...
We don't have anything to do with it, but for, for our purposes, if there's a local dispute or whatever, it would come to the City Commission.
Yes, and also, if they are wanting to appeal a decision that the commission makes, they can appeal it to the City Commission.
And does this also include the historic tax credits?
No.
That's a separate...
That's through the state.
Right, that's a...
So we haven't put it in our regulations, because it's a separate process.
Right, and does that circumvent the, the city processes, like, as far as permits and all of that, since it's a state process?
They would still have to get permits through us, they can always go to the state for the state law review, but the process can take the same time or even longer in some cases.
Okay, bottom line, you can have all the state's approvals and all the state certificates you want, but we still have to come through the city.
For permits.
Exactly, yeah, okay.
Most of the time, properties that are on the state are the national level, or they're by choice.
Yes.
They're the ones that have made that application to be on the national register, we used to own historic home, but it wasn't on the register, because it was a restaurant.
Yeah, I know, there's just a, a shift with some of the property owners, that they don't want to go through all the red tape anymore, that they want to take the state tax credits and do that, so I just wonder what impact that would have on us a, as a city, if they're, you know, want to be off our list and go through the state where it might be a little easier, but seems, seems fair.
All right, I know we have the option to recommend approval or denial, do we recommend approval based on feedback that we got from you, that you'll make those changes?
Yeah.
Okay, so, Commissioners, that said, you have a choice to recommend approval or denial, I'll take a motion.
Approval with the recommendations?
Okay.
Is that what you want me to say?
Yeah, just, it'll be approval or denial, we assume the changes will be made based on our conversation.
Then I'd say approval.
Okay, so we have a motion to approve?
Second it.
We have a second, all in favor of recommending approval?
Aye.
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 It's unanimous? Thank you very much. Nothing else, staff?
Um, we do have some other business.
Okay.
This is your last meeting, and as such, we are given in recognition of gratuitous and unselfish service as a member of the City Planning Commission, August 25th, 2020 to April 3rd, 2023, to you, Joseph Banks, presented the third day of April in the year 2022, and it's signed by Julie, who's at the Planning Commission, or...
Appreciate that.
Planning Conference right now.
I would say you could leave.
Yeah, I know, I thought it was a motion, I wrote a secret email, I moved to disapprove.
Yeah, second that.
Denied, denied.
Looks good, I appreciate it. Been fun with you all for three years, for three months, about like three years.
Trust me, I responded to his email. He said... Trust me, I responded to his email. He said, uh, no.
I'm surprised it didn't get lost. I've, I've lost a lot of his emails.
Because we don't have a main meeting this, and.
Understood. Again, yeah, wasn't here for that, here to learn, be involved, got pulled into this three years ago by, by a guy named Paul Kramer. But, uh, no, I appreciate it. So you all, this is fun, actually giving back to the community.
You've done, you've done a good job as our chairman.
I appreciate it. I just got way too much travel to just continue this, so, sorry. All right, I will sign this tonight before I leave. All right, that, then we'll adjourn our meeting.
All right.
Thanks.
Do we, do we need a meeting to appoint a new chairman or do we, do we have?
That'll be appointed next year, I believe, so he was vice chair, will step up.
Thank you very much.
You're welcome.
Good job, Don.
It's part of taking the duty as vice chair.
There you go, now they tell you.
Yeah, now they tell you.
I ended up being the vice chair of the BZA in Lawrence and then it brings, brought me to the chair, so.
Well, I've been chairman of enough committees if that's fine.
Thanks for putting up with my question.